Real set?
Yep.
Fabulous, and as I understand it, tonight is the first night of us live streaming and archiving.
Oh wow, cool.
Yeah, so everyone be on your best behavior. I'm so glad I did my hair for the occasion. So, welcome everyone to the Lincolnville Selectmen's Meeting. It is September 10th. And David, would you care to read the quote?
Certainly. Always acknowledge a fault. This will throw off those in authority off their guard and give you the opportunity to commit more. My point.
Thank you very much. At this point, I would like to open the podium for the Citizens Forum for any non-agenda items.
Rosie Gary, I just, I posted this on the Lincolnville bulletin board earlier, but we picked up a very expensive saddle today at the end of the Ball Rock Trail. Somebody, I saw the people there and they loaded their horses and they took off. And I don't know who they were, but we have, I have a very, very nice saddle. And someone can either call me or call the town office if they want to, and the town office will put them in contact with me. And I'd like to see them get it back because it's a really very expensive saddle.
Yeah, I'll help spread the word too. Thank you. Anything else for the Citizens Forum? Seeing nothing, let's move along. Let's move along to upcoming meetings and announcements while we wait for the Administrator to come back. He said, oh gosh, Rosie's going up to the podium. I've got at least ten minutes.
There he is.
Thought you had more time.
Sorry.
Oh, we have to prepare.
Alright, well, let's jump back to the Administrator's report then.
Woo-hoo. Congratulations to Selectman Garrettson on his election to the Waldo County Budget Committee.
Thank you.
North Cottown Road, the paving was completed as of early afternoon today. We still have some shoulder, a fair amount of shoulder work to do. Winter sand started to be put up today in the barn. Believe it or not, winter's coming. While we're talking on winter, this is a good time for anybody that happens to be out there in TV land or livestream land to know that might be a good time when the weather's good to secure your mailboxes, check their condition, because winter is coming. And there is some guidance that Bernard put in the town report about where property, how to properly locate to avoid as much conflict with snow removal operations, how to properly secure and whatnot. Might be sending that out to Google too, just to get people to learn. And outside of that, I think everything else is on the agenda.
Any questions for David with the Administrator's report? Okay, let's move along to upcoming meetings and announcements.
All meetings are here, the town office unless announced otherwise. The Planning Board meets Wednesday, September 12th, 7:00 PM. Cemetery Trustees Thursday, September 13th, 6:30 PM. Recreation Commission Monday, September 17th, 6:00 PM. And the Board of Selectmen meets next on Monday, September 24th. Time to be determined based on whether or not we have a special town meeting that night. And also another meeting that's got scheduled since this agenda was done. The Board of Appeals will be meeting on the 24th at 5:00 for a continuation of the appeal on Mariners Drive that they started last Thursday. They're gonna do a site walk that night and then continue on with the meeting, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there any upcoming community events anyone would care to share? Seeing nothing, let's move along to the meeting minutes from the 27th of August.
I move that the Board approve the August 27, 2018 meeting minutes as presented.
I second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And we have a couple appointments before us, or a couple of community interest forms rather.
And I don't believe that Dr. Cadigan is here. Although she told me she's not, so hmm.
Okay.
Will the other applicant be here as well, David? Do you know?
Uh, no.
No?
But that's primarily because existing planning board members were, who had the internal interest committee were told they didn't.
You're correct.
But thank you for the inclusion of the phone numbers.
Unless names.
In handwriting. So nice of you. Anyone care to make a motion for an appointment?
I move to appoint Janice Kay to the Land Use Committee with the term expiring on June 2019.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And speaking for myself, I have I don't have a problem with pointing Doc- Doctor, I guess, Dr. Cadigan, but I have a couple of questions for her.
Yeah, well, she, she'd indicated at, after the last meeting that she was not able to attend and would be coming to this. She didn't indicate, she wrote to me in an email that she'd be here.
Okay.
So.
Well, if she pops in, does the Board have any problem with jumping back to this agenda item as it, as it makes sense?
We can take it up when she shows up.
Okay.
Otherwise, I'll alert her to, when she shows to a meeting, you'll consider it.
That would be great. Thank you so much. And at the Board's last meeting, we broached the subject regarding apparent vehicles being driven into the intertidal zone at Duck Trap. And we all agreed to postpone until a representative could be present to further illuminate the Board as to the situation. David, do you have any other preamble or?
Uh, just to refresh people's memories, Sergeant Talbot Conte came in the town office one day to express concern about vehicles being driven from Duck Trap Park out on the intertidal zone. Asked if we had any, for lack of better words, tools in our toolbox to prevent that from occurring for environmental and/or safety reasons. And the answer is pretty much no. The Town could adopt an ordinance, could do signage, could do physical barrier that we talked about last time. An ordinance obviously would have to go to a town meeting for approval. Signage or a physical barrier you folks can make happen. I did speak with Bernard to get a rough idea of what it might cost. We do have a pile of unused unplanned forest stones over here that we salvaged from jobs from times past. And a couple of days' worth of work, probably talking $1,000, $1,500 to move and set, if that's something.
Has it happened again?
Yeah, would you like, would you like to come up?
I've never witnessed it myself, so I'll have to leave that to others to talk.
Sergeant Talbot, would you care to address the Board?
So, I did stop in, talk to Dave several weeks ago. Just more or less wanted to bring it to his attention as it was brought to mine. Probably the first time, so I've been a Marine Patrol Officer here for going on 17 years. And as you are all aware, Duck Trap is regularly used by all sorts of people. Including those that harvest surf clams or hen clams from the beach, specifically on super low grain tides. And as you all know, the water goes out quite a ways there, you know, several hundred yards to the edge of low water. So, I've observed many people there. Once in a while, I'll see an ATV down there, which is prohibited by state law. So, that's been addressed accordingly. And it was brought to my attention by a citizen in the town this spring that he went down there with his son and observed a pickup truck down pretty close to the low water mark, which, as you're all aware, you have to drive a considerable distance to get to the low water mark. And they were harvesting hen clams, surf clams. And I assume they drove down there so that they didn't have to lug their bounty back up to the parking lot. Obviously, he expressed concern just because it was an older log truck and he figured there was probably potential of engine oil and gasoline and whatever else dripping into the intertidal zone while the vehicle went parked there for, you know, however long upwards, you know, you could park a vehicle down there for upwards of a couple hours easily in low water, so. As we do, we continue to make patrols throughout the spring and early summer. And it wasn't until, I believe, the first week in August, one of my officers came across two vehicles parked down in the intertidal zone in low water harvesting surf clams. And it was after that that I contacted Dave just to kind of make him aware of that. To my knowledge, there's no state law that prohibits a vehicular traffic in the, in the intertidal zone. Obviously, it's got the same environmental concerns as ATV or whatnot. And basically, what I'm getting at is there's little that I can do to prohibit that activity, as it were. And whereas Duck Trap, I believe, I've come to learn, is owned by the state, at least by the town. David, did you get the copy of the lease?
Yeah, they handed that.
So, pretty much I had reached out to the Department of Conservation, who oversee that lease. And they didn't direct me with any sort of rule or regulation that they have that would help in that situation. Basically said, well, the Town's leasing that and they have the authority to regulate activity there as they see fit, so. Once the topic came up, I think it's probably prudent to point out that the road going down to Duck Trap, you know, it's a fairly short dead-end road with really no barrier at the end. There's been several occasions over the last 10 years or so of vehicles in other locations in the state driving into the water. Probably most recently in Belfast, where an individual drove down Main Street and down a launching ramp at the Power Masters Office into the water. Other occurrences that I'm aware of, a few years ago, a couple of people got disoriented at night in fog and drove down, excuse me, a dead-end road ending at a boat ramp in Tremont on Mount Desert. Both those individuals perished. And I believe it also happened in Machias and Lemoine sometime in the last few years too. So, I just bring that up. It's somewhat two separate issues, but just to make you aware, you know, there's similar, there's a similar circumstance at hand there at Duck Trap where somebody unfamiliar with the road and disoriented in certain conditions, you know, could usually continue on past the parking lot there at the end of the road, so.
Any questions for Sergeant Talbot?
Seems pretty clear. I, maybe, Matt, maybe, it's not a question for him, maybe it's a question for David, or maybe even further than that. If the Town is leasing that, are we good with putting barricades there?
Uh, we have the ability through our lease arrangement to man, kind of manage it as we see fit. And we certainly can do that. I mean, if, if at the end of our lease, somebody objected, we could undo it pretty straightforward too, but I don't see that really happening.
How tall would these rocks or boulders be?
They vary, but probably, you know, a little taller than that, John. You know, we, you're probably talking 18 inches to two feet.
Okay.
Something probably, probably that would be, a lot of them over here, I guess, would be comfortable even to sit on, you know. Almost, I won't say it'll be a park bench, but almost, some of them.
Thank you. You don't have to stand up in the hot seat anymore if you don't want to.
No, like I say, you know, my position on this certainly is, you know, I'm likely the one to get the phone call, you know, if somebody does take issue with it. Obviously, there isn't a whole lot I can do about it per se, but that's basically why I'm here, just making you folks aware of where that potential issue is, so.
Um, how many, how many times have, has the Marine Patrol witnessed this?
Like I said, the first time that one of my officers specifically witnessed a vehicle down there was, I think it was like this first week in August this year.
Okay.
Like I say, I've seen ATVs down there before, you know, which obviously has been aggressive, but. It's not something that we've received multiple complaints on, but I can see, like I say, in 17 years, it really hasn't been an issue. But all of a sudden this year, it seems to have been an issue on at least two occasions that I'm aware of, so.
I could definitely see a situation where it's like, oh, well, they've done it before and that the frequency could increase. And then inevitably, someone's gonna get stuck down there driving a place where it's soft and then the tide's gonna come in and then you've got a hazard vehicle on the flat height, you just.
Sure. Not to mention the fact, I mean, it's multi-use and I don't know, is that something that, something going down to enjoy the beach or fishing or, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever, it's like seeing, you know, is, is, is expecting to encounter, right, something.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Rocks.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm a, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I'm a
Makes sense.
I'm a fan, just, you know, more opposed to Mr. Gary coming up and offering convenient.
Oh, no, no.
Please.
So, Rosie Gary again, I would really, I would really encourage you to start out with, if you're gonna, if you're gonna do anything down there at all, I would encourage you to do this. I know it's not David's favorite, but signage. Just put a sign up, the first. The, moving the rocks is gonna be expensive and if, if you wanted to go on the beach, it wouldn't take anything. If that is an older vehicle, put your bumper up to it, push the, that rock out of the way, the size that we're talking about. Because otherwise than that, to get the rock of any consistency down there, that's gonna take a pretty big piece of equipment to load it and unload it and get them placed. The other thing is, that's just one more thing down there that when everything washes up on the shore, that's something else, those rocks for it to hang up on. The other thing is, I know you're down there at your own risk, but people just have a tendency to back up, just, you know, when they're turning around, bam, there goes a thousand-dollar bumper right there, just by cracking it, you know, these new bumpers today. Just making some suggestions and thoughts, I really would like to encourage you to, if you're thinking about doing something, the sign, the signage, to start with the signage and see how that works out. As a, as a ticket person, I checked that when I, when I was doing the ticketing during the summer months. I checked that also every day that I was doing the packing and never found anybody on the, or didn't find any, I'm not, I'm not disputing that there was somebody down there, but never saw any tire tracks down through the rocks to get to there. Sure, the tide could change all of that, you know, in between, but never, I never saw anything while I was, was doing that. And I just, I think the rocks, I think we could, I think we could spend some money somewhere else more wisely right now than, than to do that.
Thanks, Rosie. So, Board's thoughts?
Well, I'd actually sign, I'd, you think, I, from your experience, oh, I guess I, if I asked him a question, he'd ask a lot, but. Well, I'm just wondering if, if the signage maybe, maybe that would work, maybe, something, just said, no vehicles beyond this point.
Does that require a town vote though?
No, if you, I mean, I think we could, we could erect a sign that had, how do I say this in a nice way, had no legal basis or backup? You could possibly put, I don't know if that would qualify as parking or traffic. Selectmen could, can and have adopted a parking ordinance. Of course, you should say no parking on beach, but that doesn't prevent somebody from driving on the beach. You could put.
I mean, no motorized vehicles beyond this point.
Right, and then the question is, you know, what, what do you do if somebody is? Because we don't have anybody to enforce it, the county's not gonna enforce it, the poor fellows from the state aren't gonna, nobody's gonna enforce it.
Cause there's no law really against it, it's just a suggestion.
And the county, the county and state police and I presume the sixth and the Marine Patrol as well, they don't enforce local ordinances. So, it's on us.
Since we're streaming that information.
Permanently out there for the world to hear and know.
That gets nowhere.
Oh, sorry.
I mean, I, well, I guess, I would say that, I would rather, I am not necessarily in favor of putting a sign down there because I feel like a sign, we're, we're sign-heavy and that someone who's gonna drive down onto the intertidal zone is not necessarily going to be stopping to read every pertinent piece of information that's
That would just be back in the same conversation.
Available to them, and I know that people are going to back into any, any and everything. You can see the giant pieces of granite we have outside the general store that are, boom, all knocked over. Never heard a word about it, but they're not there anymore.
Like poles.
So, but, you know, I guess I would, when I was thinking rocks, boulders, I was thinking something a little bit more formidable, so I, I'm
Yeah, something you know.
I, I'm in favor of stones down there, but something that you can't miss, something sizable that isn't necessarily gonna be messed with by most average winter storms.
Like what, can you give me just an idea, like height-wise, what you mean by that?
Yeah, I'd say something you can see, you know, from driver, seated driver position, you know, so that you could see it over, over your, your, your car, so I don't know if that is 30 inches, 32 inches? Ish, I don't know, I mean, would, would it be, would it be worthwhile for a, a site visit to go down there, for the Board to go down there and take a peek and, and assess the scene?
I think so, yeah.
Sure.
So, maybe we could do that, like a pre little walk-around, just so we can take a lay of the land and, and have a little bit more of a.
Do you have, can you think of anything else for Sergeant Talbot that we need to ask him so that he doesn't have to
Doesn't have to come back.
Come to every, each and every meeting? Maybe he likes them and he wants to, which is fine.
You're welcome.
Though I can live straight then.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't.
With, with, with rocks in place, what would the enforcement be like? What, what, or would there be any?
You're asking a question, he has.
Mr. Talbot, could you please come to the podium as I address you?
I think, anything short uh, I mean, I'm not gonna be able to enforce, even if you have the Town, you know, the Town passes an ordinance, it's not something that is enforceable by me per se. And I understand the position the Town is in as far as enforcing Town ordinances. I think everything else we've talked about, signage, stones, et cetera, is more of a deterrent than anything else. And I'm not here necessarily, don't, don't misconstrue why I'm here, I guess. I'm not advocating one way or the other, honestly. I just wanted to raise this, this issue. I would agree with a lot of what Rosie said, honestly, you know, just given where it is. The beach, the structure of the land down there, you know, such that stuff moves around, you know, with ice and snow and everything else, that it's gonna be hard to set a rock and have it stay, let alone some of the other concerns. And obviously, signage is in a whole lot of difference, so. I'm not su, I, I don't really have a solution for you. And like I say, other than, you know, if there was a sign down there saying, no vehicles in the intertidal zone, other than me going, see the sign, that's about where my enforcement is.
Yeah.
Okay. I was all for putting up lots of rocks, but Rosie definitely made me think we should at least take a look.
Yeah, well, I think, I think a site tour would be informative.
I think I, I tend to agree with Rosie on signs for one, one reason mostly, I mean, looking at it from two, two points of view. First being that I'd like to think people are honest and everybody, if they know that they're doing something that they really shouldn't, they're gonna read the sign and they're gonna say, oh, I'm not gonna go do that. And the second thing, having been a kid once that used to create a fair amount of mischief, not that anybody ever caught me, but. I can think of nothing more fun than to go down there some night, especially with a couple of beers after you're not supposed to be there, and see how far you push the rocks out into the bay. And not that I ever did anything like these things back in my younger youth, but, you know?
Oh, damn.
I don't know if people that were involved out there and if it was driving around out there and whether they were, what they were purpose doing was, they were minding their own business, doing their own thing, but I, I think I would, I would tend to go with the signs first and see what happens to them. The signs we could get out for a couple hundred, $300, something like that.
Well, if we use an existing post, probably be about 50 bucks.
Okay, I mean, then, not much, not much money lost if they disappear or go somewhere.
I mean, peo-
I, I, I know.
You know, you know, my, you know my thoughts behind signs, I mean.
Yeah, you know, you have no team to put behind it.
Right, in addition to that, they're about as ineffective as anything we do.
Yeah.
If you think about speed limit signs we put up, and I'm thinking down Duck Trap, and we have no, no domestic animals on the beach. People go down there, walk their dog. We post swim advisories when the water quality's not that good. Like, see people read the sign, just walk right to the water, you know, whatever. Try it.
Yeah.
It's a worse thing happen.
So, would the Board be amenable to meeting down at half point prior to our next meeting to just see the sites and then we can collectively all hold my lines exactly what we're talking about down there? Alright, fabulous. Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Absolutely.
Good luck.
To be continued.
Sounds like you're assigning the Great Pyramid. Yes, 200 tons.
A breakwater.
Giant, you're moving.
Giant breakwater. Dr. Cadigan? No?
No.
No, no. Anyone? No? Dealer? Okay, moving along, we have Monroe and Goodwin here again to talk to us about possible float storage on town property.
Thank you very much. I'm Jill Goodwin. I live in Belfast and our business is in Camden. And last year, you were very gracious in letting us rent property by the Boat Landing to store floats from Norton's Pond. Worked very well for us. We certainly appreciated it. Once again, this year, the channel is quite low in water and next to impossible to get any of the floats that are in Norton's Pond across and over to Bog Bridge where we store them, so if possible, we'd like to enter into that agreement again with you. I think last year, we did it from, we didn't, it was from Columbus State on Memorial Day. We certainly would like to get them out sooner than Memorial Day. We had a backhoe issue this year. Anybody's ever had to repair a broken backhoe, you know how expensive and how long that takes, so. We did get a little bit behind last year. We were out for the property by Memorial Day, so. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to ask.
Will there be more this year than last year?
I, if I can, I don't think so. If it was, it'd be, it'd just be one more customer. I don't believe we'd go- I, if I can, I don't think so, if it was, it'd be, it'd just be one more customer, I don't believe we've built any new ones for, for Norton's Pond this year.
Do you remember how many more, how many there were last year?
I think we had seven customers, um-
Cause I, I thought I counted nine floats.
Okay.
I, and I just wanted to confirm, I think with the size of that area and what we have to put in there of our own, I think we're, that's pretty much maxing us out, in my opinion, that's not the board's opinion.
Mm-hmm.
And also, we need to be cognizant of that trail because there is a snowmobile trail that goes through there, and I know last year, if I remember correctly, it was quite close.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I'm, I'm okay as long as it doesn't exceed the number of floats that we had last year, and if possible, if there are some that come together, if you could put one on top of the other, that would, um, you know, I'm, I'm all for it, but, um, I'd rather not go too many more than what we had last year. And I, I might be wrong, I might, I thought I counted nine in addition to ours.
In our agreement, uh, from last year, we specified the dimension of, of the area and, um, we would still have to prepare a new agreement to be approved.
Yeah.
Um, so we could, uh, fine tune the specific area, you know, not to exceed beyond said point, X, X square feet, um, so we could put a little further clarification into that agreement. Um, and that would, you know, assuming that the board wishes to move forward with this, that we can make sure to narrow down some more of those details.
Yep.
What we generally do is if we have, I think we have at least two, maybe three customers on Norton's Pond that have more than one float, they have like, you may be two hooked together, or, um, two float, uh, two ramps with a jumper float. We try to keep the customers, those we will stack, the same customer, if they have two, you know, two floats, and we'll stack those and put the ramps on top. So, we, we do try to minimize that, um, I think some, one of our larger customers out there, some of them are starting to change out the blue Styrofoam. And if, I don't, in Camden, it is an ordinance that we can't put, build any new floats with blue Styrofoam, um, and they have five years to tra- makes the transition. I've had some of my Norton's Pond customers who started that, so, there might be a couple that we're gonna take back to the shop over the winter, we've been doing them over the winter, so,
Okay.
I don't know what the plans are in, um, Lincolnville, but I know after Camden's ordinance goes through, I'm not gonna be able to carry any blue Styrofoam from the Lincolnville customers to our place in Bog Bridge.
Right, yeah, yeah, um, well, does the board wish to make a motion to carry this conversation forward?
I move that a new agreement between the town and Monroe and Goodwin, Inc. be prepared for our approval.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing nothing of those in favor? Thank you very much. Mr. Gary, would you care to get up and speak on this particular topic?
Just a quick comment, on your, on your agreement, um, that you're gonna write up, um, and I realize that sometimes, like she said, things, things happen, but it is really, really important. Uh, if you say Memorial Day, if you could say just, you know, the day before, or a couple of days before, something on that, on the agreement, would really, really be good because we really do utilize that on Memorial Day, that parking lot, so we need that parking lot.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, excellent point, thank you. Anything else on that topic? Uh, agenda item number nine.
Jill, I'll give you something to look, to look at between now and when we come back to the board.
Okay. I should just give them insurance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number nine, um, Ms. Newton was here a couple of minutes before six and, um, decided that she wasn't gonna stay any longer.
Okay, we'll move along then. Number ten, approval, uh, for a special town meeting warrant for September twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen.
At your last meeting, the board asked that we prepare a special town meeting warrant for the twenty-fourth regarding, um, placement of moorings on inland waterways. So, you have a draft warrant and a draft moratorium ordinance.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on the language contained in either of those documents?
That's good.
Does anyone care to make a motion?
I move that the board approve and sign the special town meeting warrant establishing that a town meeting to be held on September twenty-fourth at six P M. in the Wash Common of the Lincolnville Central School to elect a moderator and then to consider an ordinance entitled Town of Lincolnville, Mot- Mot- Mor- yeah, good, Moratorium Ordinance on Inland Waterways and Moorings.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing nothing of those in favor? Thank you very much. And we head to A Architect's, um, put together a proposal for us regarding, um, analysis and cost estimating for the town regarding, uh, future repairs, improvements to the L I A building?
Mm-hmm. Wanted to summarize that?
Yeah, that'd be great.
You just did a good job, but, um, after examining some of the conditions and concerns about the exterior of the L I A building, which the town owns and is responsible for upkeep and maintenance on the exterior, um, I told you a couple of meetings ago, it was beyond my knowledge, skills, and abilities. Suggested we talk to the folks from two A who helped us with this building, um, Amanda Austin came, looked at the building, wrote up a proposal, which you now have before you. Um, I guess at this point, it's a fair amount of money, but with the history we have with, um, water, with buildings, or old school or new school, maybe money well spent.
So, just to be clear, I, I, um, the, the, uh, the building exterior analysis, that's for them to go in and look at what the condition the building is and assess that as, is, is, um, they've got this, uh, fifty-two fifty for sort of a not-to-exceed budget for that part, and then the construction cost, that's to estimate, then to estimate the amount, then, then to give us an estimate for actually doing the work to fix it is another fi- around fifty.
Right, they, they don't do construction cost estimating in their practice, they actually hire a contractor or-
They, they sub that out.
They sub that out, so they can get, we're going to, um, need, need some sort of dollar figure in order to be able to adequately budget so that we can adequately do the work.
Yeah.
I mean, we could wing it ourselves, we could not do that part and go to contractor with stuff we get from one and say, can you give us a budget for this? We're finding right now, even talking to some contractors, just getting a budget numbers challenging, cause people are right out straight, but they may not be come winter time.
I was wondering, the services not included is a pretty sizable list, um, which could potentially add up to a lot of money, do we have any idea what that will cost?
Um, I think most of that is because they didn't anticipate there being any of those services.
Okay.
Um, we're not likely to do surveys, soil tests, civil, wetlands. I mean, if we get into hiring them to actually bid it out for us, they'll be, I don't know what that would cost, but I think we probably can get to the point where we have, um, go through this, uh, these couple of tasks, get down to a couple of options that we may wanna have some discussion with, first with ourselves, with the building, uh, in terms of, do you wanna put wood siding back on it, do you wanna do something different? Uh, do you wanna try to be, for lack of a better word, historical with it, because it may have had a certain type of wood siding that, you know, may not be off the shelf? There's all sorts of stuff involved with, and I think that's why they were trying to get down to a couple, a couple of different options. If you can just pick one and say, that's what we wanna go with, but sometimes it's hard to pick without knowing dollars, too. Um, I think we'll be pretty close to having something that we can take and bid, uh, but if we need them to negotiate or oversee construction, that's when we're gonna end up with more. Cost, I can't tell you whether, without knowing what work they do, I can't tell you how, how much that might cost.
This is gonna get us a comprehensive look of the building inside and out?
Out.
It says exterior.
Okay.
I guess that's my concern, is, is just, is that, not to, not to interrupt you, but-
It's to preserve the-
Part, it's part rehearsal.
I mean, it, what they proposed is to look at preserving the exterior envelope, shall I call it, the building?
I, I guess my concern is, is if, this is great for siding and roofing and trim and things of that nature, but none of that is any good if beams are rotten in the, the sills and things of that nature, so-
It's gotten in there and done damage.
It, does that include insulation, what if that translates to framing, does that translate? I, I, I don't have a firm understanding of where the buck stops in terms of this, cause this is a large number, and I guess I would want to know that we're not gonna end up in a situation similar to our neighbors here where we end up not having it be covered under this particular conversation and having to-
Yeah.
I mean, if you want a ground-up code analysis and structural analysis and exterior envelope, um,
Well, I might show-
They can do it.
What I'm scared of, from what Labyrinth and Lowell Kern said, uh, you start wiggling the clavels and the siding and seeing what's there, it's very possible you're gonna find some of your stringers for a stupid rodent off the bottom, you've got, uh, your uprights, you're gonna find sills bad. Uh, some of them, I, I don't remember, maybe I, I, maybe I should, I don't, I know they did a lot of work on that in the seventies, but whether they, whether those were addressed at that time or not, I can't remember. I do remember the, the guys working on it and coming in down the store and getting stuff and what they were doing, but I don't remember enough of what, what exactly they did. Um, I mean, that's something that can eat up a lot of money, a lot of time, real quick.
Even the analysis is gonna eat up.
Well, yeah, the analysis is gonna cost too, but that's-
Maybe, maybe rather than biting onto this, when they come back, they're, they're out of state at the moment, I can have them come and sit down and hear all your concerns.
Yeah, a direct conversation will be great.
Yeah, just to, just to get a feeling if we expand their scope slightly and then try to identify within that expansion. Take tangible aspects to address.
I mean, in, in all fairness to, to Amanda and Brian, when they, when she came and they were, part of the initial conversation wanted to start with a, basically a code analysis, and I didn't think that was quite enough meat and potatoes to bring back to the board, and it morphed into, into this envelope, but if we wanna go back and start at square one, and, dude, I mean, everybody that goes looks at something different, in a different way.
Has there ever been a full structural analysis of this building?
Not, not that, not that I'm aware of. Um, we did have a building inspector go look at this several years ago and pointed out some things, including some siding issues, but it wasn't, you know, replaced windows, stripped siding, look, you know, wasn't a full-blown everything.
How old is this building?
I think it was built in, I think she wrote it on there, there's a sign out front, says eighteen ninety-two. And it's had additions put on it and upward expansions and-
Yeah, it'd be good to have a chance to ask them, you know, like I say, you get, you know, you open this clavber and you get there and you see there's a little, well, how, how much further does this allow them to poke? You know, you take off that next layer and look behind that one and then, you know, all the way through, you know, or does it, well, we only went this far, but, cause I hate to have, get that open and then have them say, well, we, if we're gonna go beyond this point, we gotta change the budget now, and, you know, now you've already opened the, might be nice to have a budget for-
Well, they're, yeah, they're gonna, if, I think, they'll also be looking at some of these things that, um, uh, Selecton Carrotson was pointing to, it's on the services not included, like H, structural analysis.
Yeah, right.
Soup to nuts.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, okay.
So, do we need a motion to table this, or can it just be continued?
No, I'm just good with that, if you're good with that, of what, bring in.
Thank you, Dr. Cattigan?
Yes.
Ah, wonderful, let's jump back to agenda item number six. I almost said Dr. Cattigan, I presume, but I'm not going to, get that cheesy. Um, would you, would you mind coming to the podium and introducing yourself?
I, I happen to be an obstetrician gynecologist, but my name is Tandra Lynn Cattigan.
Okay, wonderful, so we understand, um, that you're interested in serving on the Lakes and Ponds Committee, however, I was intrigued by, um, under other, you said, or where I am needed.
That's correct.
Um, I have no problem appointing you to the Lakes and Ponds Committee, but we also have a lot of other committees who are definitely in need of enthusiastic and committed individuals, and rather than consume the conversation with that, I would direct you towards David to provide you with a list of the various meeting committees, um, because you can serve on more than one.
Well, I wanna do a really good job, and I wanna really be a participant.
Yes, fabulous.
So, I, I don't know if I wanna be on lots of different committees, but maybe some of them don't entail, you know, a lot of time, I don't know that.
Right.
But I'm here at your disposal.
Well, thank you so much for your, your interest and enthusiasm, does anyone have any questions?
No, I think it's great.
Okay. Yeah, and thank you very much for coming to the meeting, uh, would anyone care to make a motion?
I move to appoint Tandra Cattigan to the Lakes and Ponds Committee with the term expiring in June twenty nineteen.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing nothing of those in favor?
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, please tell me where else I could serve.
I'll be in touch.
Wonderful.
Yeah, and thank you so much for volunteering.
Oh, no, I just, I've fallen so in love, I'm from the Northwest, and, uh, this reminds me so much of the Samoan Islands where I spent a lot of summers with my family. And my practice goes in Sou- Southern California, and I think that I found the most beautiful place in the world.
Well, thank you very much.
You did.
And I, I, I believe that, it is, the people are wonderful.
Well, thank you.
And it's just, this is where the United States should be.
Yeah.
With really good people who care about each other and wanna help each other.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, well, thank you so much for coming, yeah.
Well, you're so welcome, so are you all through it?
We're all set, we are all set.
We'll let you know when the first, or the next meeting of Lakes and Ponds is, as well.
Cause that's really good.
Didn't, didn't any change its logo on the street, since like the way life should be, wouldn't that used to be, we used to actually say that when you drove into the state of-
I think it still, it says a couple of-
I think it does, that's why I think it says that.
If, if you were here, you'd be home now.
Well, I'm here, okay, because I need to know if someone that can plow, so I can get to my house in the middle of the city. Does anybody have any ideas?
Go on the Lincolnville Google group and, and, and take a poll or, or talk, talk to that.
Up to that guy right there.
Well, you happen to be sitting right next to him.
Meanwhile, um, we have a couple more things to attend to, so, prior to acting on agenda item number twelve, uh, the board needs to convene as the Board of Assessors, can I have a motion, please?
I move that we suspend our meeting as the Board- I move that we suspend our meeting as the Board of Selectmen and that we convene as the Board of Assessors.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much. David?
Um, Vern, the assessors agent, prepared the municipal valuation return, which is, I don't know what it is now, probably a dozen pages of, well, it's only ten pages of facts and information we need to provide to the state of Maine so that we can get our homestead reimbursement, tree growth reimbursement, and all the other reimbursements we get. And if we don't do it, we don't, don't get it, the heavy hand of state government falls upon us.
Therefore, is our duty and obligation as the Board of Assessors, can I have a motion?
I move that we approve and sign the two thousand eighteen municipal valuation return as prepared by the assessors agent.
I'm second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And now that we have dispatched this item, uh, before we can move on, we need to adjourn as Board of Assessors and reconvene as the Board of Selectmen. Can I have a motion, please?
I move that we adjourn our meeting as Board of Assessors and reconvene as the Board of Selectmen.
I'm second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And David brought this to my attention and I'm gonna let him continue, but this is an opportunity to strike while the iron is hot, right? So to speak.
Yeah, so to speak. Um, this year for our paving contractor, um, we received very favorable prices compared to what we had budgeted. Cause it's hard to estimate what asphalt's actually gonna cost in the middle of winter, the coming year. And as I, over the two earlier, we finished up paving on the North Cobb Town Road today. And Bernard and I were out doing some other road work earlier, ladder pata last week. And Broadus and Heather Hill Roads, we had, for lack of a better word, postponed from this year to a subsequent year so that we could do the work on North Cobb Town. And next year, Broadus and Heather Hill are gonna be on the list along with, um, probably Youngtown Road. And it could use attention this year. And with money available, we thought no better time than to ask if we wanted to extend the contract.
Is there any maintenance that needs to be done to either of those roads before they are paved?
Well, we have, we.
If we should move forward with it?
Well, we certainly have some shoulder work on the corner of, for the intersection of those two roads that needs to be accomplished. Otherwise than that, no. That road was built in oh eight for those roads and they need to be resurfaced and profiled, brought back to them. If we don't do resurface this year, we'll certainly have to get out and do some patching that needs to be done. There's some sound line separation. There's some shoulder work that we are obviously aware of that needs to be done right now, but.
Mr. Gary.
Rosie Gary. Um, yes, David is absolutely correct. In there, the road is held up, absolutely. The work that was done was tremendous. The ditches have held up extremely well. Right on the corner, there was a washout, first time, really, that mounted anything, a little washout here. They were up there and repaired that today. Or they, they put some, they put some fill in the sharp corner in there. But what, what is concerning is the cracks. The, the cracks are opening up more and more. And at the very foot between, between, um, Benson Boulevard and Janet and Bob Richards' old place, there is, um, the road is deteriorating there more than anyplace else on the entire road. Uh, potholes are starting to come in, um, at a little, at, at a rate. The hot top is, is actually padding enough to make, uh, some mud puddles and, and, and it does. It collects water there. Uh, it should. I mean, it, it's, it's, it's no malfunction in the design of the road. The water just collects at the lowest point, and that's the lowest point. So if you could see your, you know, way clear on this and felt that this is gonna, I think it's a great idea. What you're doing is, in the long run, in my belief, uh, is that you're saving, you're actually saving money. You're really saving money by doing this now before you have to fix. But now the, the cracks are like this, next year the cracks will be opened up more. And even if you use the crack sealer and, and on that, it's still, they're gonna, the frost is gonna push them. And I, I think it's good preventive maintenance and bless your house.
Any other questions, comments?
I do need to volunteer that the, because the papers got done at two-ish today, that stuff has moved to their next job. Cause we don't wanna pay for tomorrow anyways, cause it's gonna rain like cats and dogs. So it won't be, the hope, dream and aspiration was they moved from North Cobb Town over here and do this. So, but they won't be back until the weather turns back to reasonable. And if it doesn't turn reasonable, we just send them away, if that's.
So best case scenario, we get to capture this moment. Worst case scenario.
Right. We're no further behind than we were a half hour ago. And we can, we can lock in that this year's prices versus next year's unknown.
So this is the same price that we paid to do?
Um, we'd actually be using, um, a different mix on this road, cause it's an overlay versus a new construction. There is a price differential, cause you can't put it down. You won't, we wouldn't be putting it down or stick, but it's, it's the same price as everybody else was bidding on the stuff we did earlier, so.
Anyone care to make a motion?
I move that, I move that the board authorize the town manager to contract with Hagar Enterprises to resurface the Broadus and Heather Hill Roads as paving season have the price of sixty-seven dollars per ton.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And we have the treasures and payroll warrants to approve and sign. Can I have a motion?
I move the board approve the treasures and payroll warrants.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And does the board have any other further business it wishes to conduct?
I just wanna make mention of something, um, something that wasn't on the agenda, but it is in our packets, um, the, uh, Lincolnville School Committee, um, agenda and School Union sixty-nine joint committee agenda. There are some things that I think could be beneficial if were included in this little memorandum from.
The superintendent?
The superintendent. And I would like to see, uh, I would assume financial statement is gonna bring us up to date from the school, right? That's, uh, things that they've expended from their, uh, in the time from their previous, uh, meeting. Facilities Committee Report, which is submitted every meeting, is my understanding, and the Principal's Report. I think those, those three reports are important for us to see. Not that we would do anything with them, but I think they're important when we are considering budget and what we think is going on versus what isn't or is going on.
Yep. Excellent point.
If we could just request to get those added to that little thing, that would be great, at least for me.
Yep. Sounds good. Anything else? Can I have a final motion, please?
I move to adjourn.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much.
And if you would, uh, sign a bunch of stuff to sign, I will go grab something else for you to sign while you're signing all this. You can pull that clip off, this is like twenty of those.
Hey, that was a fine, a fine delivery job.